Good evening, welcome to the school committee for April 6th, 2015. We are not approving minutes this evening. We'll do the March 30th minutes at our next meeting. Just before we go into communications, I just wanted to say one thing. This is the last televised meeting that we're gonna have before a town meeting. Typically, we meet before a town meeting at 6:30 in the library media center at the high school. It's typically not a televised meeting, it's a brief meeting. And so, because this is our last televised meeting of this school committee year, which ends at the election and when the election starts, the new school committee year, I just wanted to recognize Dennis Friedman. So Dennis is retiring from the school committee as of Election Day, and I wanted to recognize him and thank him for not only his years on the school committee, but his years on the advisory committee before that. He's given of himself his time away from his family, and he has made a tremendous contribution to the town, and I wanted to thank him for his service. Thank you. I would- Communications, Brad.
All right, to recap what happened last week, some of the big events, we had Mary Ann Angelino speak about her son's story of decision responsibility and loss. And then also during that week was sophomore M. Cass with English and last Thursday ended with long comp. And tomorrow will be the final day of third term, and it's already that late in the year. It was also the end of Green Week on last Friday, right before Easter weekend. And not too many things going on this week, but a lot of things globally. With this Wednesday, Ms. Roth will be having a guest speaker from Harvard named Chris Martin speaking about the Russian-Ukrainian crisis, which will be during D Block. And also tomorrow, there'll be a conference with a school from Jordan during lunch. And on March 15th, Mr. Murray will be going to Spain with 12 students. And the following day, Mr. Lockheim will be going to Berlin, Prague, and the Swiss Alps. That's all. Thank you. And one more thank you to Ms. Friedman.
Any questions or comments for Brad? No? Thank you, Brad. Have a good night. Other communications?
All right, we have a letter in the packet, came today, maybe whatever, talking about who live in the other school, or comments about their concerns about changes to the district policy.
Anything else? Not any other communications? Okay. Questions and comments from the audience? Anything not on the agenda this evening? No? Okay. Superintendent's report.
There are a number of things. Some of them are just updates. I'll go through them, not in this particular order, to get some of the shorter ones out of the way, because I know that we have some speakers and guests coming. So let me start with the one that's not on your list on the agenda, but is in your packet. Last Friday, you know, I never like to find errors in anything, but sometimes, when the errors are in your favor, I love to see them. So last week, we were looking at the school committee calendar, kind of dismally looking at it, and I decided that it had to be some sort of an error, because I just couldn't see how we could be getting out so late in June. And so I went back and I counted all of the numbers of days, and in fact, there was a miscount in November. So in fact, we were going to school 18 days next November, instead of 17 days in November, which would mean that with no other changes, this is assuming that we did things as we have done them for years, in fact, the 180th day would then become June 17th rather than June 20th. And while that doesn't seem like much, it's one day, just visually, it looks a heck of a lot better than it looked before, all of a sudden. So I made sure that Alec was aware of that, and I call it to your attention that it looks a bit better. But also, as a reminder, that we will be voting, or you will be voting, on a calendar on the March, excuse me, May 11th, is the May 11th meeting. That's when we typically vote the calendar for the following year, first meeting in May. That'll be also the first meeting with our two new members. I will come to that meeting with a recommendation, but we talked about this briefly at some other point, so I am welcoming any suggestions, and certainly have reached out to Alec, and Alec and I probably should have a one-to-one conversation about this, as to whether or not we will be recommending any changes to this. But I did hear some feedback from Alltown PTO, because I shared this information with them, met today with the teacher advisory, but of course, they're being represented by Alec in his group, and got some feedback from administrators, but really looking for some sense of direction about whether we want to propose something that's very different. I was at a meeting just the other day of area superintendents, and while a month ago, six weeks ago, the main topic is what a calendar's gonna look like next year, well, guess what? There doesn't seem to be as much urgency about that as there was before. And in fact, the topic of things like a major change, such as shifting vacation periods, was not something that anyone in the group was even considering, at least for the coming year. Things could change, because I think everyone agreed that if a couple of area towns were to be interested in that kind of a major change, then everybody would probably need to be on the same page. But at the moment, people aren't looking in that direction. So if you have some thoughts that you think I haven't heard, share them, because we will have to have a vote on that date. Moving on, I have a letter of request here from Sue Escola. Now, Sue Escola is a private school in Hingham. It's a bilingual school, and in fact, we had to give them approval, because the law says that the public LEA, Local Education Authority, needs to approve any private school that either moves into town or is developed here. So when Sue Escola first came along as something other than an institution providing after-school kinds of activities, and when they added their K-1 program, we did need to approve it. Our approval process was one that we established many years ago, when the then Fluency Factory was going to become a school. And was going to be part of a school, I guess that's the way we should phrase it, intended to be in the Amigo Building and intending to serve special education students. So we went through a fairly lengthy process of developing a process, because we didn't have a process for doing that. And the final implementation of it was that the school committee remanded to the community outreach committee the task of reviewing the data that we had collected about the school and that they had submitted, looking at the standards, doing a site visit. A couple of members of that committee went with Ellen to visit the school, and then we brought a report back to the full committee for action on the approval. So Sue Escola is adding grades up through grade five, I think it is, and they're doing that for next year. They've given us something in writing about the expansion. The process this time around doesn't need to be as thorough, because obviously, they already have the building, they have the same building, they have similar facilities to what they had before, it's simply adding additional grades. So I would suggest that we do what we did a few years ago, and that is to ask community outreach to get together with Ellen and to come up with a plan for reviewing the material they've submitted, and likely doing a site visit, and coming back to this group with a recommendation, one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that makes perfect sense. I was on that site visit, I felt very well. It'd be interesting to see how it goes going up to fifth grade, because my recollection of that was that the facilities were kind of small. Classrooms were small, but that's a number of years ago. So yeah, I mean, it would seem to make sense. I would imagine the chair after May would take that up. There'll be a new community outreach subcommittee appointed, so that would make sense.
What's the timeline? It's for next year?
Well, they're planning for next year, and they want to go ahead with their plans, which I'm sure they will go ahead. It would be down to us to say, "No, stop. No, this isn't okay." But we will at least notify them that until we have the election and the committees reconstitute themselves, which typically happens in mid-May after the first meeting, we would not be in a position to act until they're-
I think we should just try and do it as quickly as possible, so that they are still in school, and we can observe students and teachers interacting.
Yeah, that's a good point, to actually observe, because we didn't, weren't able to do that before, because they didn't have the full-day program. Yeah, that's a good point.
Can you find out what their dates are for the remainder of the year, when they finish up?
Sure. Okay, in your packet, you also have a handout, and I can project it on the screen if anyone else were interested, on the warrant articles that will be at town meeting that have some meaning to us. I think sometimes folks think that you go to town meeting to vote on the budget, and that's all that there is, and that's all that is important. But for this particular meeting, there are a number of other warrant articles, so I put them here, not to explain them. Some of them, two of them, we've actually reviewed the wording for and the comments for, because Linda provided that to you along the way. But there is an article before the town meeting to transfer funds, and that has to do with paying the bills from the past winter storm and the costs resulting from that. That recommendation isn't here, because it will be part of the supplement for the town meeting itself. The two that pertain particularly to us are the one that would put money into the new Special Education Reserve Fund. Do you recall last fall, $250,000 was designated restricted, self-restricted from fund balance, and that was approved by both the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee? And so that requires action of the entire town to put that money into the fund. Obviously, that's something that we want to happen. So that one should not be new to you. Article 35 is the five-year bus lease. You'll remember that we originally were going to go out to bid this year for new buses as part of a five-year lease, and we made some changes in the budget to soften the blow of this year's budget. But in fact, we are planning during next year to go out to bid for a five-year lease for FY '17. But because it would happen during next year, we do need the blessing of town meeting to do that. We've done that before in the history of our leasing of buses, so it's nothing new. And then the last thing is kind of a routine business item, and that is, as insurance monies come into the town for losses that we've incurred, they go, those funds go directly to the town, and then town meeting would need to appropriate them back to us so that we can pay the bills. So it's routine, in a sense, but certainly needs to be there this year, because we do have some losses as a result of the storm season in particular. So I commented the other day to the Alltown PTO, mentioned it again the other day, as I was urging the members of our kindergarten committee, well, new folks, to the whole town meeting process, to attend the meeting, that it's really important that you look at all the business of the committee and not just the things that you think might be pertinent to us. And so I should, sharing that information with you just quietly as well.
Doc, are these already submitted to the town?
Yes, they have been voted, as I understand it. Tom might comment on it, but they, except for the first one, which has to do with the storm-related damage and the reserve transfer, the others are in the warrant. The warrant is at the printer as we speak.
There's a sentence that doesn't look right, but that's okay.
Well, Linda or Tom might be able to comment, because Linda wrote the comment for two of them and did share the information with us in the process.
So the, under Article 24 comments, it says, "This reserve fund will help mitigate any future unanticipated, unbudgeted, and/or extraordinary costs occur in the future." Period. So it's just missing a word, or it's not correct. "Will help." That "may" occur in the future, I think is missing. That "may." Not a biggie, just, I just thought, if it hadn't gone to print- (inaudible) Sorry. How many drawings we've done this, but thank you.
Those kinds of things often come up on the Sunday before the town meeting, when we meet with the moderator, and he typically has reviewed it carefully, and so I'm sure it can get corrected, but probably not a bad idea to let Betty know.
That was, yeah, that was, I think that section was added later, actually, because someone asked for, remember, someone asked for more historical background to tie it back to-
The rationale.
The rationale and the prior vote that established the-
And even after we did that, it was, thank you.
Okay, more recent things. Full-day kindergarten, we had our first official report in from, on last Friday, about the estimated enrollment. And as of last Friday, two, there were packets for 265 children that had been picked up. Not all returned, they tend to come in more slowly, because folks need to get information from the preschools. The new financial piece that we asked for this year requires some backup for those people who are looking for either a waiver or a reduced fee and that kind of thing. But when we estimate through this spring process, or project the number of children, what we typically do is to say, "Let's assume that everyone who picked up an enrollment packet will in fact return it." And not all will, but most will. So we make that assumption, and then we add in any children that we estimate would be repeaters at this point. So that would give us 269 students. Of those, some of the interesting things are the following facts. There were 237 families who listed children kindergarten-eligible on the census that occurred in January. 237. 160 of those have picked up a packet. So you would wonder, where are the others? Did they move away just quickly in the last two months, or where are they? Well, in fact, some are perhaps families that have decided to hold their children out for another year, that's one reason. And some are families who may be considering private school, but there's always a gap. And so, right now, this time of year, the secretaries in each of the building are calling all of those names that we know from the census to find out if, in fact, they're coming or not. So that, 237's not gonna change, but the 160 could go up as a result of that. In addition to that, there were 105 children whose families picked up packets that were not on the census at all. So again, you would wonder, how could that possibly happen? Census closed at the end of January, and, you know, did they all move in just recently, or what happened? They haven't seen signs, they've not heard about kindergarten at all, let alone all-day kindergarten. We don't know. But that happens every year as well. So we don't know who, we know who they are, the best we can do with them is to chase down those who picked up a packet but didn't return it. So anyway, at the moment, it's 269. 269 at 14 or 15 sections, really depends a lot on the way the numbers break among the four schools. At one point, they were all pretty close, and now they're not all pretty close. So we've got some options in the different buildings. But at 14 or 15 sections, we would have class sizes that would allow plenty of room for growth from 269 up to, I still don't think we'll get 300, but moving up. The financial information about those folks is still coming in, so that will lag behind this year a little more than it normally does in terms of timing. But of the 124 students who have submitted their financial information to us already, 115 of them are at full tuition. And so that's an amount of 402,500, 402,500 out of the 844 that we need. And that's a rate of about 80%. So, you know, someone asked me a week or so ago, when we had the meeting up at the middle school, well, what would happen, you know? What's gonna happen? Are we still gonna have this program if you don't have 844,000? And I said at the time, "Yes, yes, we will. We made a commitment to parents, we will have the program." But it is good to know that we have now 402,500 in the bank, so we have almost half of it. So I've become more confident as we move on that we're gonna be okay. So the way it's tracking is 80% of the folks who enroll do pay the full tuition. That was the figure, 80%, when we did our preliminary, which is another thing that reassures us that this will go forward as a financially feasible program. I think the other thing that people wonder about is, so how many people have signed up for full day versus part day? And at this point, and this was a real surprise to me, honestly, at this point, we have three families, District what, that have chosen the part day. So you'll hear in a few minutes, when I talk about the budget, how that will benefit us even financially, by a little bit, anyway. So we will get another report this Friday, and each week until we get to that first week in May, which is when we have to fish a cup bait and sit down and make some real decisions, so. So that's on the kindergarten. The other thing I wanted to mention is, last Friday, of course, was a makeup day, and we had, I think, generally good attendance at school. We, let me just find my numbers here. The middle school was at 90%. Three of the four elementary schools were at 90% student attendance, this is. High school was at 81%, and E-School was at 83.8. Not quite sure about that, other than folks that I talked to today who work at E-School at the teacher advisory meeting said that, and I didn't know this, that a lot of people go skiing on Fridays. And I don't know that that's true. I don't know what's true. But it did surprise me that one of the elementaries would be that much less than the other in terms of attendance. We had quite good teacher attendance at all of the buildings. That didn't seem to be a big area of concern. So I think we got more kids than would have been there had we had school on a Saturday. I think we had more kids who were there than might have been in school on June 24th. And those were the other kinds of options that we considered. So all in all, I think it was a good learning day. There were a number of folks dismissed, and some of that was around travel, and some of that, folks meeting students, and some of that was around religious observance of some sort. So, let's see, is there anything else that I wanted to comment?
So if we wanted to, if there was thought given to, in the future, at some point, not having Good Friday as a vacation day, or, that would be part of the contract negotiation, or have to have some kind of bargaining in that regard?
Well, it would be part of the calendar setting. There are two things in the contract that are relevant to the calendar. One is that the contract says that when we're establishing the calendar for a given year, that we would meet with HEA representation and talk about it. So we could propose that in that setting. And the other thing is, the calendar specifically says that school will not start until after Labor Day. And so that particularly is not something that we could change unilaterally. That, I know Alec, we won't put him on the spot, but Alec has done a survey, and we'll talk about what their thought is about proposing something that is in their contract that they might want to change or not. But typically, when we change the calendar, we would have that discussion with them.
So then there's nothing contractual that would affect Good Friday?
There's nothing contractual that speaks specifically to Good Friday, but there is something that speaks to setting a calendar and getting feedback. Is that how you-
Getting feedback.
Sure.
Right. So, you know, like advise and consent, it's the advise part of the consent, right?
And I do think-
But they could, if we decided to, say we decided to take it up and make a change, the teachers could do what they did with respect to the snow days and formally request impact bargain.
I think it's one of those things that I think we would get a very different reaction by taking that out of the calendar now. I'm not saying it wouldn't, we shouldn't consider it, but, and making it a permanent thing than the reaction, public reaction, community reaction, than what happened when we used it as a makeup day. I'm thinking that I didn't get a single call, I didn't get any reach out from clergy or anything, gosh, this is, you know, because I think people realized that we were in a very difficult situation, and this was, you know, at least an acceptable solution to that situation. I think we might get a different community reaction here. And again, doesn't mean we take the thought off the table, but it wouldn't be similar to one.
Yeah, I think I mentioned previously, and I don't necessarily support this or not support it, but Easton, recently, the school committee voted prospectively to eliminate Good Friday, and they observed Jewish holidays as well, to eliminate all of those as holidays for next year.
I think the other thing that was, we tossed around some at the Alltown PTO meeting, was the notion of, there's a middle ground there, and that could be, could we come to some sort of agreement that if in fact, by, you know, pick a date, March 1st next year, if in fact, we'd already used, pick a number, four days, five days, then we would use that one. In other words, make an advanced plan for using it as an emergency or an escape valve or whatever, but do that now as opposed to in the heat of-
And again, this is really only, is an issue for next year, because we have such a late Labor Day.
Right.
It's the September Eve that we go back to school.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in regard to what we've discussed before, and next year, Easter's quite early, so in terms of academic time to study for tests and so forth, it's a much more valuable day, if you will, than June 22nd. Regardless of, you know, how many snow days there are.
I think that is, oh, storm-related damage, I know that John sent you all a memo a couple weeks ago, saying that the invoices he had added up to date came to $368,000. We've still got a few that we're chasing, because that number is important to Selectmen and AdCom in terms of their coming up with a recommendation for the warrant item, that's the first one on your list, but for us, that number hasn't changed any since then. That's it.
Okay. So I don't see our legislators yet. They asked for an eight o'clock start. So we're gonna move on, 6.2. John?
Yes, the, with the Plymouth River Insurance, or the roof, where we're at with that right now is, we're working with getting some prices from some contractors to get permanent temporary shoring in place, so that we can petition off the impacted area, and then open up the rest of the library for the rest of the year. You know, that procurement, we secured a new designer, which was Habib Associates, and all of along, we've been working through the insurance company on this, would, you know, send them the proposal, the insurance company said, "Yeah, okay, go ahead, go do that." We had the design done, and now I'm getting some prices from four contractors, with the hope of- hope of being able to get that temporary work that would shore up, you know, that would allow us to reopen the library and the adjacent classroom done over the April vacation. The, so that would stabilize the building. However, it's likely that this building's going to need new roof section in the affected area, so that's a summertime project. It's also likely that the extent of the, the price of that repair is going to exceed $100,000, and clearly, the design fee will exceed $10,000. And the designer, the GSB says that if, if the design fee is going to be over $10,000, that you should have a designer selection process. So with that, what we need to do is advertise for a designer. We did get a quote from Habib along with the quote for shoring for the extra design, which would include designing the repair, creating the bid documents to get that out, bid period services to help us bid it out, and also construction period services to help us administer the, the repair that gets placed. And for that, they, they priced out somewhere around $30,000 or $31,000 for that activity. So what I'm here today is to ask the school committee, we need, the school committee should set a fee for the, for the designer. And once we get that fee set, I can make an advertisement in the Good and Services bulletin for a designer. And I would recommend that we set a design fee of up to $35,000 so that I can get that ad in. Once I get the ad in, you know, it'll take a couple of weeks, it'll take about a week to get the ad in, and within two weeks after, we should be able to have proposals in from designers that wanna be interviewed. And then we have to have a little design committee set up so that we can select a designer. So, two things today, one is I'm asking the committee if we can get a vote for setting the fee for the design services for the PRS roof repair in an amount up to $35,000. And then secondly, to see if there's a way of getting a design committee from the committee members.
Okay. Andy?
I'd like to make a motion that we up to $35,000 fee for design services for PRS permanent roof repair. Such fees will include design preparation of documents for permanent repairs, bid period services, and construction administration services, as well as reimbursement expenses.
I'll second that.
Just put a verb in there when you write it up.
Put a what?
A verb in there.
A verb, okay.
So, so another question I have is, would I be correct in assuming that this is reimbursable from insurance?
I believe much of it will be, most of it should be reimbursable, yeah.
The repair, you're talking about the fee?
Well, the design, the fee is, is part of the repair.
Design should be as well, this, I'm, I'm sure there's a deductible of some sort.
I believe we have a $5,000 deductible, but I did submit some expenses and invoices to the insurance company last Friday, and today we play telephone tag because I just wanted to talk to them, talk to them on the phone to find out, okay, where are we going now, you know, what, what of what I submitted to you is going to be included in the claim? So I hope to get more clarity on that, you know, in the next day or two.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, so you got that, you can run the ad. As for the design committee, you recall, we, we had a small group, it was Ed, Andy, and myself worked on the concession. I've also participated in that on the building committee with respect to the, the middle school. And I did send an email out, I did hear back from Ed, Ed is interested in serving on it, I would like to serve on it, and if there's anyone else here?
I was more interested in concessions than the roof.
Nope, absolutely, that's fine. Okay, Carol, so that's, there's your three. Ed, Ed, yeah?
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our legislators have arrived.
Nice to see you, everybody.
So, so we're, we're joined by Representative Garrett Bradley, Representative Jamie Murphy, and, and Ted Langel, Langel, sorry, knew I was gonna pronounce wrong. Are you Bob, are you Bob's chief of staff, is that your?
Yes.
Chief of staff for, for State Senator Bob Headland?
How's everything?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
So I, we're just passing out a handout that, you know, Senator Murphy and I had put together.
Oh, sorry. You should come up here because we, we do have cameras and mics.
Thanks for the warning.
You're welcome. Doc, thanks, Ted.
This is part of the pregame show for the final four tonight, so probably get good reading.
Bless me. We, we understand, brevity is important tonight. So Ray, I can give you a quick overview, I know you guys had asked us here basically for the, the budget issues, and Ray had a couple of particular questions, he emailed us, so I can give you just a quick overview of where we're at, and then just really, unless anyone has an objection, sort of just open it up to, to questions if that, if that works. The governor, as you know, the governor released his budget, Governor Baker's budget came out, he comes out a little bit later because it's his first term in February, we will debate it. Our budget is actually literally going to the printer, we will debate, it'll be released Wednesday, April 15th, we'll have a couple of days for amendments, and then we'll debate it the week of April 27th. And then the Senate will take it up sometime in May, and conference committee will get together to work out the differences, and then if you do it as we write it up, we will put it on the governor's desk shortly before July 1st in time for any potential anticipated veto discussion. The numbers, you're always looking for, obviously, local aid numbers, the governor had proposed 5.6 billion for local aid, which is a $139 million increase. He increased unrestricted general aid in Chapter 70 as well. Bottom line is, he, he got to a number one way, we may get to that same number a different way, but my initial discussions, Jamie and I have met with the chairman of Ways and Means, and our initial discussions with him are suggesting strongly that we ma, at least match the governor's numbers, it's very hard, even though we talked to our communities about preparing off of last year's numbers, the governor's numbers are out there, in, in some communities, they become the number. I can't make guarantees on that because we have, you know, issues that can change month to month. Revenue has been somewhat up, we still have a structural deficit of about a billion dollars a year, which, you know, I think we had one budget, Jamie and I came in just about the same time, that was actually a surplus, and every year, we seem to be trying to fund the, this sort of unfunded $1 billion deficit that continues to roll over, even though we're at 4.9 percent unemployment, we tend to have it. It really unfortunately has to do with mass health, I know the governor, and the governor has some ideas about that. We did have some unanticipated increases that you may not have heard about that are really unfortunately related to some of the heroin issues that we see throughout the state, a lot of individuals who are addicted to heroin are also hepatitis C positive. Well, there's a drug now, which is actually a cure, and the folks on mass health, unfortunately, a lot of them are in that bracket that are addicted to heroin and then get hepatitis C, and then are on mass health. The issue is that cycle costs $100,000 a pill, and that has really been straining some of the healthcare budgets, and has added to some of the unintended deficit that we're seeing this year. So we will proceed cautiously as we move through this budget, but our anticipation is to try to meet the governor's number. I know, I suspect, I haven't set my date to go to town, but I did speak with Ted, and I suspect he's probably suggesting to you to work off of last year's numbers, and I suspect you're probably already baking in the governor's numbers, and that's probably why we're here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think in their last budget, they did, they are using some of the-
Yes, yes. He, he made a last minute, I'm gonna, 125 maybe, was it?
140,000, yeah.
140,000, that was willing to increase the original projection.
Meeting in the middle.
Budget projection based upon the governor's budget.
I mean, so that's where we're at, I understand it's frustrating the way we do, you do your budget, and we do our budget, and we're just as frustrated with the federal government, which does it in October, but those are the realities that we're dealt with, and I don't know if you guys wanna add anything, take any questions?
One of our, one of our main concerns is when we're looking at the budget, and we've been crunching numbers quite a bit, and we may take a vote this evening, because we're still, you know, apart from what advisory is recommending, the town meeting, what the selectmen have voted, and we're still carrying a projected increase for special education out-of-district placement tuitions. And we understand the governor, in his budget, has called for a freeze and no increases, where we're still carrying a, a proposed increase. We had 3%, I think, we felt comfortable lowering it to 2.5% at this point, but, you know, we, we didn't feel that comfortable lowering it more than that until we had some more concrete information about, you know, is the governor's proposal gonna be?
It was a very helpful email to get from you, Ray, on that point. Jamie and I had the leadership meeting today, and we spoke with the speaker and Chairman Dempsey about that, and historically, the House has not frozen that, and it's not our intention at this point to freeze that during the House budget debate. What it'll look like, I can't tell you till we're done, but we're, it's not our intent to adopt that version of the governor's budget.
But Garrett, so it's-
Yes.
-my question was to Ray was, you know, the governor said he, he wants these schools to freeze their tuition rates. Does he have the right, I, I mean, can he do that?
No, it has to go through the legislature, we have to concur with him, he can propose it, but we, we would have to sign off on that. And, you know, the gov, the governor is trying to, you know, he has a, he was elected, he's trying to put forward what he believes is the right approach on the budget, but the way our system is set up, as you know, you gotta go through the House, we gotta go through the colleagues in the Senate and come to a resolution, so right now, it's not our intent to adopt that.
It's not your intent, okay.
Yes.
So I'd be interested in knowing, if it's not your intent to freeze it, would there be any intent to cap it at a particular?
You know, it's too early to tell right now, Doc, I mean, you projected 2.5%, I can't speak to that number where we're at historically, we know that it goes up far greater than 2.5%, it probably goes up 5% at a minimum, and that's what our contractual obligations are on average at the state, an increase per year. But to, to give you a hard and fast number right now, that wouldn't be fair because it, it wouldn't be based on any fact, we'd have, we really have to wait-
If it were 5%, we'd be in a panic. We've always budgeted-
No, I understand.
We've always budgeted 2.5 to 3, and we've never been burnt.
Right.
And we don't have any children in schools that are looking for reconstruction money.
Right.
So, so that's, the extreme is, is taken away, but if you were to say this could go up more than 2.5% and even as high as 5%?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, Doc, I'm just saying, you know, it's hard to predict that until we actually see the budget rollout, listen to the debate during that week, see what other issues may, ancillary issues may come up, but freezing it is not what we have historically done. We have not historically, if my memory serves, capped it either, we've picked a number, but that number has not been set yet.
So if those, so if the rates are set, so, part of this response, so rates are set by the executive branch, administration and finances, operational services division, so, but that's subject to approval by the legislature?
Yes.
Okay.
I think last year, the outside section was but 1.5% for the rate.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, you know, we've never, we've never had a problem with the assumptions we made, which were always 3, 2.5, 3%.
It seems like you're in the, the right ballpark from what we've done historically, but till we finish the budget, I don't like to make any guarantees.
Where do you fall in the kindergarten? Because we're, you know, we're implementing the full day K, and I saw one of the items was to no longer fund-
The grants.
The grants.
Where did you see the item? In the governor's budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
To eliminate that.
What'd you say?
To eliminate that whole section.
To eliminate that, yeah. I can't see us eliminating that, I don't know what the, until, like I said, until the budget's released and then debated, I can't tell you what the number's going to be, but I really can't see us freezing that. I mean, we're trying to be respectful to the governor and, and his first budget, but historically, regardless of party, we've basically started from scratch, and the House and the Senate kinda starts from scratch on their own, and there are areas that, you know, we try to protect, and I know the speaker in particular has been a supporter of that in higher education, so I don't anticipate that being an issue, but it's just really too early to tell.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd say that right now, we're in the process of formulating our budget, as Garrett says, we're in contact with the Ways and Means Committee, so all the input we get from the communities, we take into account, we speak to the chair of Ways and Means, and, you know, until the budget's finished, and Garrett and I, since we were here last, there's been a new governor elected, it's our third or fourth governor, I forget now.
They come and go.
We've been around for a while. We're still here. But, yeah, we've both been in 14 years, so Garrett's actually been promoted as of I since our last time we were here. Being in 14 years with two of the longest-serving members in the House, believe it or not. So with that experience comes knowledge over the years, but the governor's budget is what it is, we usually start with our own budget and go from there.
Yeah, for those who don't know, Garrett's one of three assistant majority leaders now. So that's, congratulations.
Thanks. Yes, no, it's, 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 it's a great position, great, I appreciate the speaker nominating me for it, and it just allows us to weigh in at a high level and, you know, get to, try to effect change when we have our weekly meetings of what we're gonna set for the calendar for the, for the rest of the week.
Well, and it helps all of us that, you know, both of you, I know you chair Public Service Committee, and isn't Bob the assistant minority leader in the Senate? So it, it helps when you guys are in those leadership positions, people listen to you and you represent us, so that, that can only help, so.
Appreciate it.
Definitely appreciate it. Ted, do you have anything specific that you wanted to speak to? I, I actually saw Bob on Saturday with his boy at Foster School, but-
No, we, we've actually already met, the Senator Headland and I have already met with the new, there's a new chair of Ways and Means on the Senate side, Senator Spilka, so we'll, we'll have that fresh kind of look at, at the budget as well on the Senate side. But we've already met with her to express, and, and we usually keep it to, you know, our local issues and funding needs when we go and, and meet with her, but we understand the challenge that we have with balancing the budget, and not all, I don't think, like we've saying, we're not gonna start, I think, with all of the assumptions that the, the governor has made, but, you know, he had to, you know, balance a, you know, almost $2 billion gap there, so it is a starting point, but I, I would agree that the Senate, you know, and the House, we, we're kinda lucky in that we get to go third, so we get kind of the third, third crack at it after both the governor and the House do it, and then we kinda take a look at, you know, maybe even, you know, from the time the governor proposes it till we do it, revenue numbers could change a little bit too. You know, the governor didn't take anything from, you know, stabilization, you know, maybe that's something the legislature looks at, who knows, depending on, on the needs, but we're, we're, you know, looking forward to a pretty good debate on the Senate side as far as meeting, you know, trying to meet these needs. It's unfortunate that, you know, we're here again with these minimal increases, what I consider, you know, to Chapter 70 and unrestricted local aid, but the, the budgets have, you know, just grown, you know, so much over the years that it just kinda caught up to us this year, so it's, it's, it's not a good year to see a lot of growth in our budget, and a lot of the line items are, you know, post 9C cuts from 2015, so it's gonna be a tough one, but hopefully we'll prioritize these, these needs over some of the others.
And I know, I think I've seen a list of new bills that you've all submitted for the new session, are there any educationally related ones?
One of the ones we did, which I know a lot of the teachers spoke to us about, and I think Jamie's a co-sponsor as well, was eliminate the fee for the fingerprint.
Yeah.
Yes, we heard a lot from teachers that they didn't think that was fair, we had adopted it from what other states do, so this legislation, and if I, if I could think of one bill that may pass, seems to have bipartisan support, would be to eliminate that fee. Yes, Doc?
But as I read this, this bill, it doesn't really eliminate the fee in the sense that if you're an educator, you can deduct it, practicing educator, you can deduct it from your next licensure renewal. If you're not retired or whatever and wanna keep up a license, then you'd be reimbursed from the state. But the part about deducting it from the next license, my sense is the major source of revenue to our Department of Education is in that licensure fee, and taking $35,000 or $55, $35 or $55 for every educator out of that would be akin to reducing the budget for the Department of Education.
One, there's, I believe there's another bill to straight eliminate it as well, but it's, it's one part or the other, once you get into the general fund, Doc, as you know, it's, you know, you're just, it's, you're moving it from one area to another, so, obviously, it takes money, it's a new service that would take money out of the general fund, but we're hearing a significant amount of pushback from educators regarding having, number one, having to do it, and number two, having to pay for it.
The good thing is that it's a one-time fee, so hopefully we'll get them all done at some-
That would be the goal.
I have just a general question, I can't remember from eight years ago when we transferred from, you know, to, to Governor Patrick, so it seems like there wasn't a whole lot of mention about this huge deficit, and then all of a sudden, Governor Baker came in and said, oh, there's a huge deficit that no one said anything about. I can't remember, did that happen eight years ago?
Yeah, it was the same, from Romney to Baker, to Patrick, there was a 9C cuts that the governor put back in, and then it was a deficit. I mean, I think, you know, the guy, I think this governor's really tried to, I mean, he's from the building, he was Secretary A&amp;F, he's very bright, he under, he gets in the weeds, he understands that you really can't sweep this under the rug, so I think his, his experience coming in, having come in and having worked in the building has allowed him to get up to speed on it much quicker than if it was, you know, a different person.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just, I, I understand you have challenging budgets, but I'd just like you to all keep in mind the pressure on us of the mandates, and then coming into what we have to fund locally, and, you know, we have the park testing versus MCAS testing, and getting the technology for that, and the pressures on the teachers with the educator evaluation, and, and then I heard Attorney General Healy speak on Friday to a group of high school leaders about, she has initiatives coming on dating violence and more of the prescription drug dangers that leading to the heroin addictions, and, you know, she wanted to partner with the MIAA, the Athletic Association, on the dating violence, and asking these teen leaders to, and here, you know, I was, as a school committee member, I'm thinking, here's another mandate coming. As a parent, I'm thinking, okay, you know, she's being responsible, asking these student leaders to take some ownership of these issues, but, and I realize they're very important issues, but we're also losing time in the day of teaching these kids, and these are very important issues to teach the kids, and we want the kids to be whole people and well-rounded and understanding life and pressures, as well as, you know, the pressures on them with reading and math and science of passing tests, and so, just, when you hear about more and more mandates, can you take a deep breath and think of us, and especially our staff here and our teachers, of having to fit all of this in, and the faster they come, the more of a challenge it is to keep up and find the funds to enact them, and so, just keep that in mind, please, that, you know, we're trying to nurture these kids, and the staff did an incredible, I watched it again this weekend, that video on, for our teachers this year, about how our students are unwritten, and our teachers are helping them write their life and write their story, and we're just trying to develop these kids into good people, and so if you can partner with us and help us do that in the right way, I would appreciate it, so.
Oh, thank you. You know, we know the difficult job each one of you has, we know the difficult job it can be to be an educator nowadays. We're very cognizant of the fact that money's an issue, and we also know that regulation is also an issue, so, but thank you for the work that you all do, and thank you to the, you know, the educational community for all your, all of your efforts. As the budget moves forward from the House to the Senate and then into Conference Committee, you know, this is always an open discussion, so whatever happens in the House or the Senate, or if there's any differences, this conversation can continue all the way until the budget's finally signed, so, we're here tonight, but obviously, this is an ongoing discussion all the way through this budget season.
So, to Liza's point, I guess, in the handout you provided on Chapter 260, it says that the law directs the DESE to develop and produce educational materials, I'm skipping, subject to appropriation. So, apparently, if it doesn't get appropriated, the materials won't get created, although it doesn't talk about providing any money for the teaching and the training of the teachers and so forth, but at least you're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, that's the domestic violence piece that we did, and all of that is subject to appropriation, which was a, something, I was served on the Conference Committee on that, and we added in specifically, because of Liza's point, we heard it from the bullying issue several years ago, that that was a significant burden on the community, so when we did the DV bill, which is a, it was a landmark bill, we specifically said anything that related to the schools had to be subject to appropriation.
And I do think there's a growing awareness up on Beacon Hill about these unfunded mandates. And I know as the Mass Teachers Association has been setting up meetings that we've had with, you know, directly with the teachers, that Senator Headland, you know, has come back saying that that's one of the biggest frustrations hearing from the teachers, too, and I think there's legislation.
I think Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor's actually spearheading a unfunded mandate.
You know, specific look at.
Issue, looking at this, so the governor's charged her with it.
Yeah, that, as they piled up now, we want to take a comprehensive look at all of them and see kind of where we're at, and they have also put a, you know, freeze on regulations, too, that might affect that degree, but there is a growing definite awareness up on Beacon Hill about the unfunded mandates and the frustration at the local level over them, and I think there's going to be a closer look over, over the next couple of years at that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Well, thanks very much for coming.
Dot, did you have something?
Yeah, the gun violence one, we knew, of course, that there was a requirement in there for more time, and that suicide training and so on. I will say that, that we superintendents have been awaiting, DESE was going to come up with some suggested kinds of training and that kind of thing. We don't have that yet, but I, what I didn't know until I read this was, it says in here, the second bullet requires school districts to have a school resource officer. Well, we have three in Hingham, with the generosity of the Hingham Police Department and the two prior chiefs who found that to be, you know, a compelling need, but this doesn't say the town, this says the school, so if, in fact, there were a change of thinking, you know, in our police department, in terms of what their priorities or their needs are, then this essentially says, and not subject to appropriation.
No, it actually is subject to appropriation.
It is, no, that's.
I served on that Conference Committee as well.
Okay.
The bullet points, you know, just pulling from this, the summaries, that one out, but that was a highlighted issue that, you know, we, that's our goal, is to make sure every community has a school resource officer, but we did it subject to appropriation because we knew it's not something we can just put on, you know, city of Austin, just X amount of schools.
Okay, that's good for clarification.
I mean, there has been a focus in recent years regarding opiate abuse and school safety. Garrett and I were both, we're both former Assistant District Attorneys, so we have a little bit of a background in some of this, but it seems to be that there's been a real recognition of the drug abuse epidemic in a lot of communities throughout the state, so I think you're going to hear more and more about that, as well as school safety as the years move forward with these budget cycles. Unfortunately, I wish it wasn't the case, but it seems to be that even with the new governor, it seems to be announcing that he'll also be spearheading a study regarding opiate abuse and drug abuse in the school systems, and after, after high school-age kids get out of school, so.
Yeah, I mean, I loved being a prosecutor, but then my good friend Jack Diamond would come in and beat me all the time, so I had to get out, so.
Anything else?
Anything else? Thanks, everyone, anytime.
Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to a budget update.
This is mine. Did you see that call for a six-year career plan for high school students?
Can we put on the?
Would you like some light, Dot?
Yeah. If you push the toggle switch.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. So, this isn't very different from last week, because, of course, only a week has gone by, no opportunity for change, but, but a few things have changed. So, the date, obviously, is the April 6 report. This is the page that just shows where budget votes were, the initial school committee vote, the 45858702, which is where the school committee budget stands at the moment, 5.44% increase, and then Education Subcommittee took a vote and recommended to, of AdCom and recommended for AdCom, and they took a vote, and that's the 45413720, 4.42%. That's the recommendation record that will go to the town meeting, and then the selectmen took a vote, and they voted the same number, and so, we end up with a situation where the school committee budget is different from the other two votes by $444,982, and that's what we've been calling the gap, the gap between school committee vote and the votes of the other bodies. So, when the school committee took its vote, we, that was on March 2nd, and we had reduced the bottom line of the budget by $713,981 from our original request. Subsequent to that, we've made some other reductions. So, on the left side of this closing the gap chart, you have the school committee's vote, Board of Selectmen and AdCom votes in blue, and the gap, the 444982. On the right-hand side, we had some reductions, further reductions at last week's meeting, total of 294487, and a proposed new bottom line, which then put the school committee amount, if that were to be adopted, and we didn't take any action at the last meeting, but that would give us a new bottom line, it's 4.77% increase from FY15, and the total adjustments, then, with the ones that we suggested could be taken last week, 294487, and the $713,000 that had been reduced prior to that of a total lowering, if you will, of the bottom line, the overall bottom line of the budget of $1 million, 8,468, but therefore a remaining gap of $150,495. But I want to stress that there was no action taken last week, simply an indication that we felt that we could reduce it by the 294 further, and that would bring us to 45564215, but still a gap would exist, that's the 150495. And this slide has changed slightly. The additional $294,000 that we suggested could reduce the bottom line last week was in three categories. One of the categories was simply new information, things that we didn't know before, there was an unanticipated retirement, a small amount of savings relative to what retirements would typically yield, because this was a person who wasn't at the highest degree status and also did not work in Hingham for her entire career. We had an unanticipated vocational tuition withdrawal that we will not need for next year, that's a $23,000 savings, and we had reduced our tuitions for special ed, and that goes back to the prior discussion, the collaborative had already voted a two and a half percent increase, so we could lower that for the collaborative from 3% to two and a half. And in addition, we lowered all of the private special education tuitions from 3% to two and a half. So, that was a savings of $21,181, and then we had just opened the bus bid with the new plan for the, for the coming year, and that was a savings from what we projected the bid would come in at, at $8,817. We then looked again at the list of requests that we had made and suggested that we would eliminate the elementary tutors, which were there, really, for additional instruction, RTI kind of instruction, and that's a more personalized instruction, particularly for kids who need help, but also kids at the other end of the spectrum, especially at grades three, four, and five. We originally had budgeted, budgeted, requested $79,000 for this, and one of the prior cuts, we reduced it by $20,000, that left it at 59, and we're now saying sadly that that would be something that would, we would have to recommend would go, so that's 59. The clerical support for business office, that was reducing the number of hours a week, which was going to go up by five hours a week, and that was a savings of $7,000. And then we did eliminate the maintenance position. This was a position that we were looking to restore, goes back to a position that was cut back in '08, '09, '09, '10, around there, and we've been trying to restore it. We had to take it out of the budget last year, we're also sadly recommending taking it out of the budget this year, but we had a big gap to, to close. And then, the other thing that we looked at is that we had two tuitions at this point, special ed tuitions, that we could not put in the category of either likely or highly likely. So, if we were to remove those, because we don't have any imminent thinking that there is a name to go with them, we could make the assumption that at the town meeting, the $250,000 will be put into the fund, and the fund is exactly for things that we didn't know about at the time of the budget vote, and therefore, if we were to need one or both of these tuitions, and the total amount is $113,000, we could actually make use of that, that fund. That does assume that the warrant item that's there does get approved at town meeting. So, that total amount would be 294,487, that has not changed. We did have an additional person this week who asked for a full year leave of absence. However, it's a young person, fairly low on the salary scale, and in fact, what we would have to budget to replace her is not a, well, it is a savings to us, $1,300, but that's using a projection of what we could hire her replacement for, so we didn't feel comfortable in, in taking that. We have some thought that there may be an additional tuition, but we're not ready to put that forward, that not be needed because of a likely move from town, so that's not there. So, that leaves us with the 150495 that we mentioned before, which would get our budget to the same level that has been approved by both Selectmen and Advisory Committee. So, you need to have some confidence because of the thing that I'm going to recommend that you do about this. So, you need to have some confidence that we have some sort of a vague plan, at least, of where that money would come from, if in fact, you know, we don't have a few miracles along the way. We talked last week about fuel assumptions, adjusting the fuel assumptions and bidding, again, a piece of our fuel need for next year, and John, every time he kind of gets ready to say, this is the time to act on that, something new happens, now we're talking about Iran and what might happen there, but we still do believe that that is something that we can work on, and that there are some savings likely there, rough, 15,000 to 20,000 would be a rough estimate, could be more, could be less, that's not something that we want to give you there, other than as a source of some dollars in savings. Because of the number of students that we currently have that would appear to be interested in the half-day kindergarten option, there may be some additional savings there. We had a cost of $71,000 originally for kindergarten in midday transportation, and that savings was mainly because while we knew we would be taking some children home, then we wouldn't be taking children home and bringing other children back, and so we reduced the savings in transportation as a result of full-day kindergarten from $71,000 to $35,000. Well, it's still $35,000, I think it would be hard to argue that if we only have three students, or even if we, 10 students, or even if we had 20 students across the district, that transportation might be able to be provided either by a single bus, or maybe by vans or some other way, so we do think that there is going to be some savings there, and from $35,000 to something less, and I would say to at least half less is a likely number, but since we don't have the kindergarten enrollment complete, we didn't want to put it in, but wanted for you to know that there's another place that, that is a possible, as soon as we know the kindergarten enrollment. Additional personnel tuition changes that may occur, we have one that may, and, but I don't have a real dollar value to go with that, but past history suggests that in this period between now and the first part of May, there will be some other changes, I can't quantify it. The status of the governor's recommended flat tuition increase, so you heard that story tonight, we have. we have all of, all of the tuitions now budgeted at two and a half percent. We don't have any students in an institution that is asking for construction, reconstruction dollars. Those are those big percentage increases. And so you heard Garrett, it could, you know, I guess it could stay at two and a half. Last year, they said it was about one point seven five. If in fact, we could reduce the whole two and a half, which now doesn't seem likely, that would be forty-eight thousand dollars. That was the figure that some of you asked about last week, and I didn't have it. But it's forty-eight thousand would be the two and a half percent, so, you know, even if it went from two and a half to two, there would be, still be some savings there, albeit a much smaller number. A very reluctant reduction would be the two point six five FTE high school new teacher request, and that is because we feel that we need those, those teachers, pieces of teachers they, they mainly are, that, you know, we could argue that, well, the total high school enrollment for next year is not expected to be more than it is this year, but the 10th grade enrollment is a lot bigger, number one. Number two, in each of the last two years, we requested FTEs for high school growth, and we got some, but we didn't get what we requested, so in a sense, we've fallen behind. And so that is a reluctant cut, but when push comes to shove, if we have to come in at a number that you have voted, we will come in at a number that, that you have voted, if in fact you take a vote. But there's a hundred forty-six thousand there, if we reduced all of those, that would be reluctant, but, but more likely, what will happen will be some combination of all of those things, things up above. The kindergarten proposal is not different. The only thing that's out there is the fact that we may not get three hundred kids, we may not need fifteen sections, and if we need one less than that, that's about eighty thousand dollars. You can see the original savings was there for the midday transportation. That's just a comment, because that's not in the budget at all, it's in our regular ed budget, not savings. And so that hasn't changed from the last time we spoke. The capital budget has already been approved by everyone, and we feel that we've been well-treated this year in that capital budget. I think everybody would agree with that, and that that figure does include the hundred seventy thousand dollars for our reconstruction of the parking that, that all of the town departments use over at, and, and the driveways there that they use over at the, at the depot. So that brings us to just about where we were last week, and, and we have a recommendation for you. So the first thing that, that you all need to decide is, where do you want to go with respect to the town meeting? Do you want for the school budget to be at the same level as the budget that has been recommended and approved by AdCom and by the Board of Selectment? So if in fact that is your desire, then we would recommend that you take action on that tonight. Oh, I'm, one thing I forgot to say on the prior slides is, one of the options that we had for kind of, if everything else fails, this is where we could look, one of the options we had there last week was that we could look to using some of the circuit breaker money that comes in this year, that can be used this year, but that we would typically use as an offset for the F seven, Y seventeen budget. And almost nobody in the room thought that was any kind of a good idea at all, so that no longer is, is on the list. Are you looking for a phone?
Yeah.
Okay. Then that's not my new phone.
Sorry, I won't get too far without this.
So that is off the list. There was some other discussion, I think Carol mentioned the seven thousand that was there, and, you know, that we didn't take any votes, there wasn't consensus, but I felt a real clear consensus about the issue of the using circuit breakers. Some, that, not there as an option. So our recommendation then is that if you determine that you want to get to that figure, that you take a vote to do that tonight, and that as part of that vote, you would request of us, School Department, that we prepare a very specific proposal for living within whatever budget you vote, to present to the school committee in early May. And we say early May, and we did this last year, and think it worked well, because in early May, we will be sitting down with the elementary principals, looking at how many sections they need and how many teachers we have. We'll be sitting down, we being Ellen and I, will sit with the secondary principals, and each of the department directors, one by one, and we will be looking at what class sizes would be and how many sections we need of every single course we offer. And we would at that time also have the kindergarten enrollment set, and as well, the K to one. We currently are trying to get information on kids moving from K to one. And in addition, we know some, by May, we know people who are moving out of town, they've told us that. We even know some people who are moving into town, and have already registered their kids, and they're, you know, they're anxious to get here. So that's a, a good time for us to say, okay, at some point, we have to put the budget to bed, and you would, as part of your motion to change the bottom line budget, is to say to us, you, you need to commit to a budget, and you need to come up with a plan and tell us what it will be. And in the meantime, you can ask that we monitor and report any changes of circumstance between now and that, that May meeting, and, and hold us accountable for coming in with a budget that meets your goals in terms of the bottom line, and is many of the goals and needs that we have as we can within that bottom line budget.
Ask a question. I'm a little confused on one thing with the reduction in midday K transportation from thirty-five K to something significantly less. When on the full-day K for all proposed budget, you have seventy-one K possible savings for midday transportation, which is offset by basically what we get for the typical student tuition. So I'm confused on the two different numbers.
Well, the, originally, when we started out with the kindergarten proposal, we said that there would be, first of all, we quantified what kindergarten transportation would cost us, and we said that that would be a, a savings. What I'm saying here is that we, we cut into that number, and I should have pointed that out. This slide is the original kindergarten budget slide. And so the comment predates when we cut the seventy-one to thirty-five. So in the, in the, in the handouts from, from last week, we showed you all of the different things that we reduced, and back early in the process, we reduced the seventy-one to thirty-five. So now we're saying, but you know what, we don't think we're going to need the thirty-five. Does that answer your?
So is the savings still seventy-one? Is the savings going to be seventy-one, or is the savings going to be thirty-five?
It's going to be about nine.
The potential savings is thirty-five, because the other thirty-six has already come out of the budget. Is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, right.
So, but then if we lost the revenue on the typical student, does that mean then the total cost for the full-day K is an additional thirty-five thousand?
No, those two things are different. What we said originally was, I think this is what we said probably at the meeting that we have with the Advisory Committee on the Full-Day Kindergarten, that, the, these are notes. And so we said, there's seventy-one thousand we can possibly save. On the other hand, there's sixty-seven thousand that we will not get to into the revolving account. So now, we no longer have the seventy-one in savings, we only have thirty-five, and we're going to reduce that further. We still do have an estimate of sixty-seven K loss of typical student tuition to the revolving account. On the other hand, some of the things that we paid for out of that, which were paras and, and paras for things like the integrated full-day K, those, there, there will be not as many things that we need to charge to that revolving account as there were, because the integrated K as a institution is gone. The, there are provisions for providing for those kids within the full-day K, and every full-day K is going to have a para. So, so those two things were listed as kind of offsets, there's a savings here, but there's a cost over there, and so now, we reduce the savings. The cost in terms of less money into the revolving account is still there, but so is the, the, the smaller need for those dollars.
So the net there is substantially less than sixty-seven? Because there are additional, there are costs that are gone, and there's revenue that's gone, so it nets out to something, I don't know, thirty thousand or twenty thousand or whatever, some number like that?
These were numbers too, when we were talking about the town paying for the program as opposed to the tuition.
This predates, and I should have said that, Andy, upfront, this predates the-
I don't think you can look at them as being part of the cost of the program, because the cost is being funded by tuition. These are just potential offsets, and they're now changed based on circumstances that we've just discussed.
I'm just going that we have the midday K transportation listed in slide five and slide six, and they're different things, and it's confusing.
Right. It's because originally it was a possible savings of that, and now the possible savings has been reduced to thirty-five, and may actually be reduced even-
So the, the initial thirty-six thousand dollar saving, which is already out of there, already reflect, is reflected in the budget, right?
Yes.
Right. So it's just in a different account, you know, it's-
But I should have mentioned, this was an earlier slide, and that's why the difference exists.
So when, when, when there was discussion at the Board of Selectment about the, the school budget, there was a lot of talk about, you know, if there's additional money, that perhaps some of that money could go to the School Department to, to do some of the things that we're going to be asked to cut by this difference. But I'm not clear as to the mechanism that would exist.
Well, I think we talked about that night, that there really isn't a clear mechanism that would exist.
So for instance, if we voted a budget that corresponded with, with what AdCom and Board of Selectmen are recommending, and then an additional, I'm making up a number, a hundred thousand dollars came in, there would have to be a reserve fund transfer?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, because that was a dilemma that night, as that discussion-
I mean, we'd, we'd go and say, perhaps, there's a, we now understand there's additional a hundred thousand dollars in local aid that we didn't expect, or chapter seventy money, or whatever. We'd then, I presume, have to go to the Board of Selectmen, or to the Advisory Committee, and Advisory Committee first, say, we'd like you to approve a reserve fund transfer of a hundred thousand dollars that would reflect that additional funds, which we could use to offset expenses in the-
I, I would presume, first of all, that we're talking about monies for fiscal sixteen.
Yes.
So those wouldn't be available till after July one. And if we did go to them for a reserve fund transfer, I would imagine they'd say, come back to us at the end of the year, and we'll talk about it, and that would be, you know, ten months-
Right. But I mean, that would, that would be the, it seems to me that's the only mechanism unless they, unless the, because you can't revote the budgets, because the budgets have already been approved by town meeting.
But remember, the context of that was that Paul was making a recommendation for their vote to be higher than it was. And so if you take away that context, you have a dilemma.
Well, no, but I think Irma, I believe, and I thought Paul Healy as well, were sympathetic to-
To the, to the issue, yes.
Right, if additional funds were available.
I actually think that that discussion meant that if between then and town meeting, additional funds became available, that perhaps the recommended amount for town meeting could change. That's what I understood them to mean that night, that it wouldn't necessarily have to be a reserve fund transfer the following year.
Right. But, but, but if those funds don't become available till June 5th, or whatever,
Right.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think, common sense-wise, that shouldn't change the ballgame.
Right.
If it still comes out of the governor's budget, or wherever it comes from.
Kathy, could you get the lights, please, just slide it? No, we need the other two up. Sorry. Thanks.
Didn't someone allude to an additional a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
That was the state aid that's already been factored in, I think.
Okay.
Yes, Ted added that to the last forecast meeting that we had, feeling that he had reasonable confidence that because the total amount that government's budget had was higher, that he would be willing to risk adding another hundred forty thousand. That was in the very last forecast meeting, I think, that we had with-
When was, when was that forecast meeting?
That was beginning of March.
March. Okay, so it's not reflected in the forecast that we received on two twenty-sixths?
No, yeah, because I, and I don't think it was, right, it was just before they voted that that decision was made, because we had just gotten the information on that amount.
It was, it was in the forecast, I don't know if the written document or not, that, that showed that the budget was balanced now.
So I have a question, did you, I know at the end of the last meeting, there was some question about the Advisory Committee's recommendation for contractual increases in their recommended number. Did you get that resolved?
We haven't had any discussions since the last meeting with anyone from Advisory Committee.
Because that would be a number, I think, for practice.
Up or down, Carol?
It was taken in.
It was.
It was, across the board for all being-
When did we return to the town last year, John?
I think about seven hundred, seven hundred, about eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred thousand dollars. And how are we doing this year?
This year, I mean, with the snow expenses, we're, we're, right now, I'm looking at about eight, six thousand dollars, or somewhere around, it's really under a hundred thousand dollars, negative, maybe about negative thirty-five. But that doesn't alarm me at this point right now.
Okay.
Snow expenses meaning what, meaning?
Well, some of the, you know, because we've been paying some of the, the snow expenses.
You mean, add to that three seventy-five number?
Yes.
Okay, but we're going to get that back.
Right. Yeah, and the insurance settlement, so I mean, you know, there's a, it, it's, it's, there's a, I mean, it's, that's what I have as an estimate right now, you know. So yeah, the three seventy-five, we haven't paid all those, those are what the expenses are going to be, so there are some things in the budget I've taken into account, you know, what I, what I know, what I see, and right now, I'm running about thirty-five negative.
So we have some of our own expenses, such as overtime, that kind of pale in comparison to the big number, but are still-
So unless I'm misunderstanding, there's really, what we're talking about is, do we revote to correspond with what AdCom and Board of Selectmen have agreed to a number? Or do we go to town meeting and suggest some other number to town meeting? Because if we're not willing to do that, we might as well vote the number that's already been voted.
Right, and if, so if we want to, want to vote a number other than what AdCom has voted and will recommend at town meeting, number one, you know, we need to be able to justify that. I would imagine we'd want to have support for that. And two, we need to find a source of those funds. You can't just get up at town meeting and say, I want to change our budget number, right? As you learned, I think, last year, or knew, but you were reminded last year, you had to come up with, okay, if you're going to increase this, then it has to come from somewhere, where is it going to come from?
Looking at your options, it looks like you can really cover about fifty thousand dollars between the fuel assumptions and the midday kindergarten transportation savings.
In real dollars, yes. But there are some other, you know, all it takes is one more special education tuition, or it takes one more-
But that would be then unknown from the time we voted our budget, so it would come out of that other account, if that happened, because-
Well, I'm talking about a reduction.
Reduction, oh, you're saying an additional, right.
Yeah, I'm going in the other direction. I think that we can, you know, we can live within the budget that has been proposed. It's really up to you, we can make it work, we always have made it work.
I, I do not want to see us eliminate all of those high school positions myself, so that's where I'm struggling on that particular item.
And let's just be clear, so just to clarify what you just said, when you say we can live with the, with the amount that was, was recommended, that doesn't mean we can still get everything that we have-
No, no, it doesn't mean, exactly.
-been trying to get for that number. So there will be some additional cuts, perhaps, that need to be made in order to do that.
Yeah, perhaps another way to say would just be, we will live with whatever the town appropriates, within that budget.
So Dr. Gell, John handed us on January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, all our revolving accounts, and if I'm looking at the projected June thirtieth revolving accounts, it looks like we have like a million four in them. So can't we take more money from the revolving account?
We've taken already ninety thousand back- We've taken already ninety thousand back several weeks ago.
Right. But I mean, I'm just looking at them in aggregate, it's a million four. So we got this down to a million, we have this down to a hundred and fifty thousand. That's the, that's barely, that's approximately ten percent.
We're using some offsets. So some of that million dollars is already being.
Was offsets in the budget.
In the budget.
And in addition to that.
Increase that.
We took another ninety thousand.
There's hundreds of thousands of dollars that are used as offsets.
I'm just saying here, what the receipts is, the plan use, and then the projected balance. They're still showing projected balance on this sheet of approximately a million four, when you add in all the revolvers. Unless someone wants to explain this to me differently, I'm just looking right there at what the total reserves will be, the balances. So it seems like a million five, if we need, we have a million four there approximately, you know, so we possibly, when we get closer to the end of the year, if we need more money, we don't get other things favorable.
I don't think, John, you need to speak to that. I don't think that's accurate.
The forecast on those revolving accounts, I mean, what's really known is what we have right now in place. I mean, you know, we could forecast revenues out. We have significant things happening. Kids in Action is in those numbers. You know, that program's going to significantly change. We did actually take out, I think, another sixty thousand out of the athletic account, you know, which is running, that was where, you know, where we did that ninety thousand dollars. We put ninety thousand dollars more from the revolving accounts into this budget so that we can make room for some of those new additions that we're actually looking for. I think at the end, the, you know, we have to reserve some money just to cover about a hundred thousand dollars worth of cash flow, which is for payments that we'll continue to receive for the field account. And, you know, and then, you know, we will have, this budget be very, very tight, so we're going to have some expenses. You know, as you know, from the building revolving account, we took out twenty-eight thousand dollars this year to cover the boiler breakdown, you know, to the extent we have other things. We need to take out usually big chunks of money from that. So the forecast going out to what we'll have at the end of the year, Andy, I mean, it's, it's.
I'm just reading here, John, it says, balance SWAG, June of fifteenth, athletic fields, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. We're estimating receipts of two-fifty. We're going to plan use two-ninety-four. Projected balance for June thirtieth of sixteenth for the athletic is three hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Right. And the SWAG is scientific wild guess.
But I'm.
Scientific wild guess.
Wild ass guess.
And you have to note here, but I'm still saying, on all this stuff, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand is not, you know, it's a very, very small. It's like.
We do have some questions there.
Point zero zero three of one percent of our entire budget.
Well, and as Carol pointed out, there are things that we will be in our favor, that it's not going to be a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So I guess, I think what Andy's getting to, and where I'm falling with all this, is that I'm okay with the budget. I think we should go in together with Advisory and Selectmen because of our record of coming in on budget, our under-budget returning money. I think we're going to be all right and we'll find a way. And I trust you and the administration to figure out how we're gonna, what we're gonna do and balance it off. I agree with Carol. I would not, I don't want to see those high school, I don't want to see all coming out of the high schools. You know, I think some combination of what you've suggested here. John, when you can, you know, use your crystal ball and figure out when gas prices are at the lowest and, you know.
Right, we'll lock into a contract.
Lock that in and go from there.
But we do have savings both in right now. I mean, I have one contract which is higher. I locked in a little bit too early, but, you know, I think we can average out and have some good savings.
Yeah.
I would agree with Carol and Dot. Thank you for giving us, you know, options that are in greater than a hundred and fifty thousand, as my quick math here. And so that, that looks like we can safely get parts of those high school teachers that we truly need the most once we know the distribution of the students. So thank you for, you know, offering more than just the minimum to give us options. So I feel comfortable with going with the town meeting numbers.
Andy? I feel very comfortable with the town meeting number. I also like to say that I know we're talking right now about this gap that we're trying to get to. I also like to take a positive look at this, using your front slide, your second slide. We put in for two point, approximately two point four million of changes. We got almost two million of changes. That's a lot of money. So we should be very grateful to the town, the community, that we basically got eighty percent of our final budget. And so I'm very happy with the number that the Board of Selectmen and Advisory voted on. And if we can close that gap, and I do support, close that gap by using some of these other ideas you propose, I agree with. I still like the idea of keeping the high school teachers. You know, if you are looking for reduction, I've still put on the table, and I'm the minority in this, the new, not meeting this person, the person's going to be in charge of all.
Facilities manager.
The new facilities manager.
Manager, yes.
So I put in that, I have no problem going, taking the full, using the budget, the governor's budget of zero increase, because that's what we know now. I still think those increases we might be able to take out of the reserve fund. So again, I feel very comfortable with the AdCom recommended and the Board of Selectmen. And thank you.
So do you want a motion, Ray?
Just a second.
Okay.
I agree. I think it's important that we try to keep as many of the teaching positions at the high school in as we can. We've addressed other areas where there's been need. We haven't been able to address those needs. And I think it's important, I was just at school council this evening at high school, and we're talking about how successful the freshman advisory program is, has been, and how disappointed they are that they're not able to kind of spread that across all four grades, because it would be very helpful. We were looking at a recent survey that was done about student stress and how the freshman, the advisory program might help to alleviate some of that if there were more time available to address independent, individual student needs and concerns. So I agree, and I appreciate the time and effort. You know, folks at home and folks here, you know, there's a number of folks here who look at the budget very closely, I know that. But folks here who don't and folks at home should know that this is a very large budget. It's the largest budget in town, and it is for a reason. But the level of detail and the focus to specific line items, I think, needs to be appreciated. These are real dollars. And we're talking about not round figures, but, you know, twenty-one thousand, one-eighty-one. We're talking about real dollars that represent real services and they're not estimates. And they're, you know, painstakingly poured over by the administration and by us. And I, you know, just as we're, it looks like we're nearing the end of this budget season. I appreciate everyone's time and effort. Would you like to make a motion?
I don't like to make a motion.
There we go.
I can, you can make it if you want. I like to make a motion that we approve a budget of forty-five million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, as previously approved by the Selectmen and Advisory Board.
So now we'll second that motion.
We want to add that we should ask the school department to come back to us with a proposal as to how we can provide the services that we need within that dollar value and also to come back to us in May with a.
I think they have that message.
With an update?
We got it.
Okay, good.
Terrific. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's what you call a meeting of minds. Good. Thank you. Okay, the next item is six point four, the proposed modifications to the conditions imposed. Sure. By the planning board in connection with the site plan approval of the high school fields project. So just real quickly, generally, what was distributed toward the end of last week, and which you have a copy of here, is a further revised markup of the schedule that was attached to, as part of the conditions of the planning board decision. The revisions reflect a conversation with Margaret, a number of conversations with Margaret to get details, you know, specifically about what exactly is, you know, going to be needed, having her look at certain schedules and try to project out and what makes the most sense. So you'll notice that, for instance, the changes that are being requested with respect to amplified sound on Monday to Friday are limited to the end of, just until the end of games, which Margaret has explained typically is around seven forty-five, certainly by eight o'clock unless there's overtime or some other extenuating circumstance. So the thinking was that eight PM would be a reasonable time to end that and not later. In addition, on Friday night, really the only change was to eliminate the word football. So there's no increase in the number of Friday nights. As Margaret explained, you know, most of the other teams don't play on Friday nights. To have an opportunity for field hockey or girl's soccer to play on a Friday night is great, but no need to necessarily schedule any more than three. Next year's home football schedule, I believe, only has two home games scheduled as of now.
We have three home games scheduled, one is homecoming, which will be on Saturday.
So there wasn't a need to go any further than that. The spring changes are consistent. In fact, in the spring, the Friday nights till ten were eliminated for amplified sound because it wasn't necessary. It had been carried over when we originally adopted our policy, and then that was used as a basis for establishing these conditions by the planning board. But upon further review and discussion with Margaret, it was determined that it wasn't, it wasn't necessary. Other than that, there really aren't any other changes. So if folks have other questions or comments and want Margaret to speak to anything in particular, we have some folks I know in the audience who might want to say something. So it would open up to the committee first.
I'm just, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're able to scale back the amplified sound. I had a question in two areas, I guess. One is, were you saying until the end of games typically eight o'clock? And my recollection is when we originally talked about this, the seven-thirty time was the idea that that would give time for, if the dance team was there or something like that. So if it's going to be later than that, how much, what are we talking about in terms of the kinds of things that might be?
Typical night games begin at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, Margaret, you should probably come up here so you're on TV.
Our typical night games begin at six. Monday.
Whoa.
Monday, Monday through, well, even Friday for that matter, unless it's a football game. Football is, seven o'clock is the universal time for Friday night football. A soccer game will take an hour and forty-five minutes. Field hockey takes about an hour and ten to fifteen minutes. And so to turn the sound off at seven-thirty and at seven-thirty-five, a freshman scores the first goal ever and you go silent, just doesn't seem appropriate.
So my question is, or if I understand, then the only, if we were stopping at seven-thirty and now we're saying it'll be roughly eight o'clock or to the end of the game.
Right.
To the end of the game, the only additional PA usage is going to be for goals scored?
Yes, that's, and that's all we do at all.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's just varsity football is the only one that uses play-by-play.
So if a goal happens to be scored in the last fifteen, twenty minutes of the game, then there will be one additional announcement to come over the PA.
Right.
Right. And if you look at the notes on the flip page in item four, what was added was goal announcements and also the halftime, the halftime dance routine was added for other sports as well, just to make it match. But.
Be equitable.
Yeah, to be equitable, but typically you don't have those.
No, typically we don't. We could, you know, we have quite a large dance team. We could have a squad go to a soccer game. It's just a part of school life.
Right.
Any questions while I'm here?
Well, the only other thing I had, I guess, relating to this email concern that we had, is that the, this, and it's not necessarily for you, Margaret, but you're welcome to chime in if you have an opinion, which is the Sunday moving to eleven-thirty AM. My understanding that was really primarily a scheduling situation, right? That youth football in other towns starts at that time? Was that?
Yeah. Well, we have someone from youth football here who could speak to that. I think Sue Rizzo is here on the Board of Hanging Youth Football. Sue, if you wanted to come up. But my understanding is that most other towns start games at eleven or eleven-thirty, but no later than that. And we were the sole outlier starting at twelve on Sunday because that was the restriction imposed due to variance associated with the old bleachers on the old Michelson Field.
So I guess the point is that one of the concerns in here was that the kids who were playing football might have to get there earlier, but for every other game, they have to get there earlier anyway.
That's right.
Okay.
Want to hand these up?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
No, that's it.
Yeah, I have some questions. So on the, well, one question I have is, this seems to be a dramatic change in last week to this week. Last week, the write-up was just usage for all games. And then, and I thought you had talked with Marg, or someone had talked with Margaret, and then now Margaret comes and now it's back again. So can you just give me some?
I can speak to a couple of things here. I don't think it's a dramatic change. I think, I think the change, the request to go from having the lights on, being mandated to go off at eight-thirty, and I've requested, can we move that to nine o'clock? What I've just handed you is a handout of this past fall of every date we had the lights on.
That's not what I was referring to, is the dramatic change. Just.
Okay, well, let me, I'll finish this and then I will.
You finish what you were talking about and then.
Because it might address what you're, so we, what I've handed you is when the lights have gone on and when they've been turned off. I've highlighted the times in which we've turned them off prior to eight-thirty. And it's quite a bit. The idea of having the ability to keep them on till nine o'clock just helps in the idea that we have practices that begin at three. Typically, they're two hours, three to five, one team, five to seven, another, seven to nine, another. Last year, my football team barely used the synthetic field for practice. And when I say barely, I could probably count on one hand the amount of times during the course of the fall they were on that field. As you all know, we have a new football coach, and that is not his desire to not be on that field, nor should it be. And a two-hour time slot is important. Tonight is a perfect example. You know, our grass fields still have snow on it. We've had to have sub varsity games on the synthetic field. And by the way, thank God, we have that field for this, for this spring. But we played a JV game today, starting at four, followed by a freshman game. At seven, about seven-fifteen, my two varsity teams, my two varsity lacrosse teams got on the field and they have to turn the lights off at eight-thirty. My girls' team has a game tomorrow. You know, I'm going to tell you, I don't think they're properly prepared for that game in that they didn't have enough time on the field. You know, having those lights on till nine o'clock would have been a big help. Would we use that all the time? Of course not. But it would just provide that flexibility to be there. Regarding Friday nights, the idea of football, the word football being in there really, I think, is restrictive. It's not appropriate to designate the lights stay on till ten o'clock for football. I think we should take that, that out of there. That's, I think, we didn't need necessarily more ten o'clock games. The football structure right now in the state has gone to a seven-game season and then the playoffs. This past season, we had quite a few. season and then the playoffs. This past season, we had quite a few home games, and it's because the previous year, we were building the field, we had one. And so as a result, this past season, we were given, geez, it could have been about five home games, which is a lot. From here on in, you have seven games. One year, as this coming year, we have three home games far away. The year after, we're going to have four home games. And that's the way it will go, three and four.
And one of those will be homecoming, which you're saying will be on Saturday?
Yes. And, and on that, the way it's set up right now, one will be homecoming on my four-home-game year, one will be homecoming, and one's going to be Thanksgiving. Okay? So to finish your thought on other dramatic changes.
Well, I was referring to what we received as a school committee of the exhibit as opposed to what, what was, what your intention was. So I had thought that what we received on March 30th included Margaret's comments, and it was written as, you know, the way it was written was using every night until, on Friday nights until 10:00 p.m. and for any games. And I agree with striking the use of just football on Friday. I don't have any issue with that. And then this week, we get this, and it goes back to the just three nights. And so I'm a little confused as to, you know, why the dramatic shift.
Sure. So I don't think it's a dramatic shift, and I think I can explain it. And I did explain it a little bit last week. So I did consult with Margaret a number of times before the prior version from March 30th. The reason why it originally had stricken the limitation of three Friday night games without a specific number in there was because Margaret and I had talked, and I knew that she intended to come to the planning board meeting, and I thought it made more sense for her to speak directly to the planning board, to provide kind of that narrative explanation of justification for use of Friday night games. And I did not want to propose a number, but rather have that number, whatever it might be, appropriate, come out of that conversation with the planning board. So I didn't want to propose a number that, all right, but then since we had the discussion last week, spoke with Margaret more, in more detail, and she really drove down and said, "Well, you know, we're talking about girls' games, and the girls don't really play on Fridays, but they could. Do we really need to have more than three? Well, probably not. We could probably still live with three." So that, that's kind of where we ended up. So originally, the idea was not to necessarily suggest a number that was going to come out in the discussion of the planning board. I had every intention that a number would come out of the planning board discussion, presumably requested by Margaret. So she's comfortable with the three, particularly based on looking at next year's schedule and how other teams schedule their games. So that sounds, that sounds great. It was never looking for, and no one suggested, that we were looking for an unlimited number of Friday night games. And that was not how it was presented.
And I'd like to make it clear that I'm not looking for more, for the sound system, for that to be much more elaborate than it is. It's, it's just, it just makes good sense to, if you're starting a game with sound, to finish the game the same way.
And, and you said too that for football, play-by-play, it's only the varsity that uses the play-by-play-
That's correct. Yes.
-loudspeaker. So the JV and the freshman-
They don't use play-by-play.
-don't use that. So the neighbors wouldn't be impacted by that. Okay. And so I, I understand, you know, the slight tweaking of the flexibility on, on the high school usage. I appreciate that. I think we should reflect that in the application. I was rereading it, that if we're going to change on the chart to typically ending at 8 o'clock, that we should make that consistent in the application, because it still says at 9:00. And that, in the application, that varsity football is the only sport that uses the play-by-play to be specific to that. Because I, I do have a concern after hearing Wallace Boyer last week and Beth Rockoff on, from the neighbors, of if we're going to make a change, to make an incremental change, and that the demands of, you know, the popularity of this field is, it's great that so many people want to use it, and that we have this resource, especially now because of the weather that we've been inflicted upon this spring season. But this is a huge change in usage for their neighborhood. And to now, now we're asking for even more usage, even if it's a half hour, you know, more, it becomes another, really 45 minutes by the time all the cars leave and everything. And I think on the youth football and the play-by-play especially, we should take that in small steps. And I'm not comfortable with every game getting the play-by-play on the weekends. I think if we do anything, it should maybe test it out for a game or two and see how the impact is on the neighbors. Because we are, we're adding a lot, and this has been a long history of slow of adding more activity for the neighbors. And that's one area where I, I feel that we should take a little step back.
Okay, that's, that's fair. And just, just a couple of things. One, I don't think we're adding a lot. So I think, let's be careful in how we characterize it. We're adding a little bit, okay? There are a couple of minor changes. I will leave it up to Margaret, how she wants to characterize play-by-play for freshman and junior varsity at the high school. If we were to put it in here and have, essentially allow the planning board to restrict us from the freshman and JV teams from using play-by-play in football, then if we ever wanted to change that in the future, we'd have to go back.
I think we do, we do what our league does.
Okay.
And that's what-
Okay.
It's, they don't do play-by-play with freshmen or JV.
So if your concern is that, Ray, we might want to put in the conditions, play-by-play for junior varsity and freshman teams is, will be consistent with MIAA practice?
You could say that.
Yeah, I mean, frankly-
Which currently is not done.
Patriot League.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, whichever.
Yes.
Frankly, I don't, I don't know that you need to add anything, because that was never really specifically addressed. I mean, anecdotally, in the meeting, we can say, when we're talking about the time and the use of amplified sound, and say, "Oh, and by the way, freshman and JV don't use play-by-play. There's no, you know, that's consistent around the league, and there's no indication that that is going to change." So that's not, that shouldn't be a concern.
So I'd like to comment on the play-by-play for Hingham Youth Football. I mean, one of the great things of serving with Dennis over the past three years is, is the number of times that he'll second somebody's motion that he doesn't necessarily agree with, but he wants the people, or the proponent, to have the opportunity to be heard. And I, I respect you for doing that, Dennis. And so I think I'm going to take that, that position here. I think that Hingham Youth Football has used our fields for years and years and years. And I don't think it's up to us to be the gatekeeper to decide yes or no, we're going to include that in the application. I think we should be, we should include it. And that's what the purpose of the planning board, that's the body that decides yes or no, and listens to, and, and, you know, really kind of weighs in on that. That's their job. And so I guess I see our job as being inclusive and letting the planning board deal with the issue when we get there. So I would hate to see us not included in the application.
Yeah, and the reason why I always include in the application is because the request was made from Hingham Youth Football for those two changes. To include play-by-play, it's something they wanted originally and didn't get. It was specifically restricted. And the half hour earlier start time, which was requested.
It's six games.
So it seems to me that that's a discussion that happens in front of the planning board, and if the planning board sees fit to grant that, based on, you know, the discussion that happens at that meeting, then so be it.
So can I ask her some questions? So just on that note, before I forget that train thought, that's all good if our application didn't say the Hingham School Committee respectfully submits. So this is, on our thing, it says, so you're now like saying, let them decide?
No, no, I'm saying as a school committee member, I want to be, I want to include it, and let the planning board will-
We're not advocating for it, we're just putting it out.
I'm just including it, because they are a, they're, they're somebody that we've had a relationship with and uses our fields for 25 years, 30 years.
Right. So Andy, what I think you're getting at is that, you know, we haven't taken a formal vote on all of this, and obviously there's been a lot of discussion, and we don't all necessarily agree on all of this. Some are, you know, have, have different views for different reasons, and I get that. The school committee is, is the overseer and is responsible for this project, property, rather. And as the applicant under the original site plan review application, we are the applicant again for any modification of that site plan review approval. You know, my intention next Monday night, at the outset, is to say, and I'm sure folks are watching it, is to say that this is not an adopted policy of the school committee. You know, there are difference of opinions on this, and you'll hear them during the course of this discussion, from the school committee, from neighbors, from users of the field, from the athletic director. And we put it all in front of the planning board and let them decide what the appropriate way to proceed is.
So Margaret, some questions. So making it simple, you really just want the lights till 9:00 p.m.?
Right.
Monday through Thursday?
Yeah, off Friday.
So the ex, okay.
When we don't have it till 10:00.
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
Which, now, I know there's the traffic concern, but I don't think there's been use much concerned. There was one thing in here about the amplified sound. Do we only have the amplified sound for two days a week per game? Could we only have, for games, two, two days a week? I thought I remember reading here.
That was the original, that was in the original.
And now, okay.
Two weekdays.
Two weekdays. And now we can have games four days a week, or with the sound?
We could. This spring, we could have games every night of the week.
All right. Well, especially with the weather.
With the makeups. Correct.
So the stuff that you're asking for, from the high school point of view, sounds reasonable. You know, going to 9:00. I know Dr. Ed had said to me, I know it's an extra 10 minutes per team, but it is affecting the neighbors 30 minutes. But again, I don't, I know that people are concerned about the traffic, but it's not been so much the lights. My thing that I hear a lot of people say to me, they don't really care so much about the sound. They like the scoreboard to be used all the time, especially if you're watching a game, you don't know what quarter it is. One other thing here is, I'm confused on the use of the police. There's a recommendation here to lessen the number of police? I mean, I thought-
Bigger bets.
But why? I mean, have we had any reasoning for that? It says, you're quoted in here, it says, "Most towns against, which Hingham plays utilize only two to three officers."
That's correct.
Okay. Has, what has the chief said on this?
We're going to hear from the police next Monday night.
Okay. I guess my concern is, you know, you talked about Hingham Youth Football submitted stuff. I've not received anything here that, from a request from them.
I have.
Okay. Then I think you should have shared that.
Maybe we should hear Sue Rizzo to speak-
I did. But I mean, we don't, usually Dr. Gallo hands this stuff in packets and that stuff. And, you know, you talk about the process and evaluating stuff. People have talked about this is a policy. Last week, this is our policy.
It's, it's not our policy, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
We adopted a policy in January two years ago.
Correct.
The planning board then, and that was after discussing, starting the permitting process with them, a suggestion from them that we adopted. The ad hoc committee started to work on it. We took it on and finalized the policy. And that was done to try to address the concerns of the neighbors in particular about usage, because this was a new facility. It hadn't been used yet. Nobody knew what the introduction of 80-foot lights and amplified sound that was state-of-the-art was going to mean. So there was a lot of concern about that. So we adopted that policy. The planning board then took that policy and altered it and used that as part of the conditions for the site plan approval. There are a few things that they altered that we have found over the last 18 months of use that really need to be changed. The restriction on Friday nights to just football games, you know, the, the timing of the use of lights, and amplified sound not being allowed for goal announcing, and to the end of games, rather they cut it off kind of in the middle. And the requests that came from Hingham Youth Football. And those requests were talked about, you know, over two years ago. But in the context of this, they were, they were suggested again. So, you know, it, our policy was not followed. So rather than come back in and adopt another policy that won't be followed, it seemed to me to reverse the process, take the requests coming from the users, the high school teams and the youth groups that pay to use our fields, have that discussion with the planning board, and then once a decision is made and revised conditions, if they are, adopted, then the school committee might then want to revise its own policy.
I mean, my point of view was, when we proposed our policies and went to planning board, we realized that we had to give a little bit more give and take to get the project. So you might say, not say that we adopted their policy, they changed them. I feel that to get this project done, we knew we had to make additional sacrifices. Again, going till 9:00, I have no issue with that. I think changing the word from "football" to "all sport," I have no issue in that. I'd love to hear from the police. And also, I'm reflecting my comments more to what you need for your programs. So based on, those are the three changes I think you are really, you're asking for 9:00 for your programs, and you're also changing the word from "football" to just non-gender-
Right.
-for Friday night.
Just dropping the word "football."
Right. And then possibly a change in the police shoes.
The sound to the end of the game.
And the sound.
Oh, and the sound to the end of the game's to 8:00.
All right. And this, of course, does not include MIAA tournament.
Right. Which hopefully will host. But I think, but I mean-
Right.
I have no problem supporting what Margaret's asking for from the school, from the school point of view to run the programs. I don't know enough about the other stuff.
Why don't we invite Sue Rizzo up?
I have one more question for Margaret. We, and I made the suggestion, that we added that we could host MIAA events. How, if, if you could have that opportunity, how often would you want to act as a host? Every couple of years?
No, I could see, well, our, our facility was basically unveiled this past fall. Tournament directors contacted me and said, you know, it's, it's just a beautiful facility. Specifically, field hockey and soccer really loved it. And, and they said, "At some point, we'd like to be able to talk to you about hosting, this being a host venue." And they said, "But we'll give you a chance to, you know, everyone get used to, used to the facility, but it really is beautiful." And, you know, for, for the events they're talking about, it is a very appropriate venue for it. And would we like to do it? Yeah. You know, we've been, we've been the recipients of other communities that have hosted us for years and years and years. And, and yes, we, and, and it's also, I think it's very complimentary to us as a community to be able to, you know, roll out the red carpet and say, "This is Hingham."
Yeah. No, I totally agree, and that's why I suggested it, because I, we have been hosted so many times.
Right.
We should return the favors.
Right.
But it wouldn't be every year. It would-
No, I mean, and it might, you know, it might just be for, hey, we'd like to use this for, for you to host the quarterfinals or the semifinals, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to get out that it's not something, a tremendous burden adding to the usage, an occasional usage.
That's correct.
Great.
Ray, I just, I'd like to go through the process a little bit more. There were, you guys already went before the planning board, correct?
Correct.
And did-
We were there.
Yeah. Did anybody go, was the police there represent-
Chief Perino was intimately involved.
Okay. And, and this is part- Okay, and, and this is part of the year, the year look back that we promised to go back and look at. We promised we would go back and look at lights, sound, and the police.
Right, and we had that look back hearing and we got input from both the building commissioner and the deputy police chief, who indicated that other than that initial problem with the sound before it was regulated and retested, they have received no complaints about the sound, the lights, the use of the field.
And Chief Perino was actually the one that suggested that we could cut back on the number of police that would attend.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, and, and that meeting took place when? Last month?
Uh.
He wasn't there.
He wasn't there, deputy chief was there. It was.
So we've heard from the police, I guess is what I'm saying, right? I, I think we've heard from them. And, and maybe we need to hear from Hingham Youth Football.
Yeah.
Sue, would you, would you mind coming up?
Okay, before I sit down, I would just like to say, over the past year, we have been very good neighbors. I have been vigilant in terms of the use of that facility, the lights going on and off at the appropriate times. The, the use of sound, no shenanigans, we've, you know, I think we've been the model of integrity, and I continue to move forward with that. It's just, you know, it's, it's a beautiful place. Our, our community loves it. We, we're really enjoying it. We put together a facility where the lights, we took the light meters, don't forget, we took it to the property lines and we tested them for the appropriate lumens or whatever. We took the sound system and was tested at the property lines for decibels. We have done our due diligence in terms of, of making this as neighborhood-friendly, I think is possible. And, you know, I think that should not be forgotten.
Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Sue, just name, address, and capacity.
Susan Rizzo, Seventeen Harvard Drive, Hingham Youth Football Board and Hingham Snap Board. So tonight, I just wanted to address a couple of things. Liza, you brought up the important issue of, you know, taking things slowly with the play-by-play and things like that, and I think that, that's a great suggestion. I do, I think it is important. We did meet with Ray, Tom and I, who's the president of Hingham Youth Football, as well as our own board has met on quite a few occasions on this topic ever since sort of the whole field project came up. Because prior to that, when the old field, Hingham Youth Football was allowed play-by-play. So up until the whole field and the turf situation came up, we had play-by-play all the time, or every Sunday. So it's six Sundays in the months of September, October, and maybe one or two weeks in November, depending on, like this year, Labor Days later, so it might be into that. And Dennis, to answer your question about the eleven-thirty, actually, all twenty-one teams actually play at eleven. But in, we have a graduated schedule, so we're just asking for the middle instead of twelve to eleven-thirty. We're not asking to move it to eleven, we're saying, you know, eleven-thirty is in the middle because we, we do want to be good neighbors and that's kind of how it's been for a while. So we obviously wanted to be reasonable in that request. So that's sort of how eleven-thirty came up. So we do accommodate, you know, would appreciate that accommodation. As far as the play-by-play, that's something that's, it's youth football, it's not a, a lot of plays and, you know, every single play. It's, it's, you know, not, they're not announcing the down, the time, and everything, on and on and on. They're announcing so-and-so carried the ball, for youth football, so-and-so carried the ball, you know, their name and things like that. It's not a constant, you know, every single, like on the pros, it's not like that. And it also gives opportunities for kids in the media programs to do the announcing. We have some parents that have an expertise in do the announcing, but also we have some high school students and also some youth brothers and sisters that are in that field or want to get in that field, you know, want to work with H-CAM and things like that. So it gives them an opportunity to do a little play-by-play and get some real-life practice in a, you know, a youth situation. So it does give them an opportunity to that, so it is a little bit of a benefit there as well. But really, it's to give the kids an opportunity, because a lot of them will not be playing in high school, they will not get that opportunity. So in the youth sport, it's kind of more of a tradition to have that. And all the other towns in, that we play in, we play in a league of twenty-one towns, and they all do play-by-play. And they all have sound.
And no expertise here, but I've called play-by-play for a youth football. I know Jack Diamond has maybe more expertise over there, but that was on the old Michelson Field.
So question, Sue, so you're saying that when they were playing on the prior grass field, they did have play-by-play?
Yeah, I called the game.
Every game, every, for, for years, every year they had youth football.
So it's only changed with the new turf field?
Yeah. And so this is our chance in the one-year look back to try to get some of that back if, you know, or at least to be looking at, because once the one-year look back's gone, we don't really get another opportunity to come up and ask for that again. And also, to support Margaret's additional nine o'clock timeframe, I think is important, I think, because the flag football teams played as well on the turf over the year. And it would give them more time and extended time to do that as well. When, once an opportunity comes up, if an opportunity got up, they would be able to have a little more time to play those flags.
Andy, don't you run the flag program? I run the flag program. I always talk to her about Margaret asking for nine o'clock. Again, the whole conversation with the neighborhood, the feedback we hear, some people are concerned about the traffic. The use, the lights, they don't mind. It's usually the sports teams that, that leave at nine, but then they don't get out till nine-thirty. The bigger thing is the noise. Most of my kids, though, are well in bed by nine o'clock, so I don't think I'll have that many games there. I couldn't have.
Yeah, but I think it's, it also gives an opportunity, because actually I've been there a few times when the lights go off and the custodians are on the field. And it's been a case where it's more for flexibility, not necessarily for the youth at, for the nine o'clock at night, but for the high school, where there are overtime games and things like that. So there are some extenuating circumstances, so I, you know, we've been out there in the middle when the, when the custodian's trying to get stuff off the field and the lights go off. And it is, it's dark. It, I mean, it's not graduated, I mean, the lights go out, and it is, it's dark out there. So I do appreciate that the, you know, the lights and all that, but I do think the extra time for the teams to practice when it's needed. And it's not every night, and it's when it needs, I just think it's important to build the flexibility, because again, we don't have the opportunity to go back again.
I think the, what you pointed out on the sound is something, again, not that I was involved in, in setting the regulations up to begin with, but I think it'll be important when you, when it does come up before the planning board, to point out that not only was it done previously, but based on all indications, it's much less onerous with the new sound system in terms of, you know, the, the noise over, you know, overspill and whatever than it was, when obviously the field was right on the property line before, too.
You're right.
So I think, you know, that's, that's, I think that's an excellent point for you guys to make and make sure they understand.
Thank you.
That, that that was the status quo before and.
Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to say something? Jack, name and address.
Good evening, my name is Jack Diamond. I live at forty-one Woodlock Road. I think I'm here tonight in my capacity as a booster parent for the high school field hockey team. My daughter Kate is a junior. She'll be one of three co-captains there for next year's team. In addition, she plays lacrosse. By way of background, my son played football. He's a senior. He played football four years at Hingham High. Started on the old field, finished on his field. Before that, played seven years of youth football, and I think I was guilty of being the announcer for every home game they had, and usually get called in to do somebody else's game as well. From a field hockey standpoint, obviously, the, the expansion of the use of the field, you know, just the extra half hour or so, given the girls the additional opportunities to get some time on the field. You know, the spring sports, you've got lacrosse, boys and girls competing for the use of the field. The daylight hours are longer, there's more time out there. In the fall, you've got football, which Coach Killinger didn't use the field a lot, but as Margaret indicated, the new coach's intention is to use the field a lot. You've also got boys and girls soccer competing with the use of the field as well as field hockey. So there's gonna be more demand. When you get to daylight savings, it's gonna be less hours, so there's more need, I think, for the modifications. And again, I think they're very, when you look at the benefit it provides to all of the teams, particularly the girl sports, particularly field hockey in the fall, with, you know, the, the minor intrusion, the extra half hour of lights. And we're talking about practices during the week where there's not P A. systems, where there's not a lot of noise, where there's not a lot of traffic and things. You know, the intrusions are minor for the extra benefit that Margaret gets and the, and the school gets. As far as P A. system goes, I've been involved in field hockey now for three years. If any of you have watched field hockey, it's not uncommon that there will be no goals announced in the course of a game. I've never seen a sport with more zero-zero ties. We like to call it a pillow fight amongst, amongst the group. So there's not a lot of goals that get scored. There's not gonna be a lot of announcing in P A. burden there. So I'd ask the board to consider Margaret's requests.
Thank you, Jack. Chris?
Christine Falvey, twelve Isaac's Break Drive. I actually have one question and then one comment. So Margaret, I think I was actually, as I'm reading over the changes in the policy, I'm surprised about the three Friday nights, getting rid of it in the spring, and then only keeping three Friday nights, so I'm gonna go a little bit opposite, I think, to some people who would like, like us to, to have less usage of the field. So I looked at the three Friday nights in the fall, and I heard you say two of those will definitely go to the football team. So that leaves us one Friday night left. And I know, I know you're probably gonna say, like, traditionally, field hockey or soccer won't play on a Friday night. But I don't understand why we're boxing ourselves in so tightly that if we get a great opportunity to let the boys soccer team or the girls soccer team or the field hockey team or whomever get to play a Friday night game, why we, we're, we're having such a strict policy? Now in the spring, we're taking Friday nights away completely. And just, just one other thing. I mean, in this time, when our kids are all looking for things to do, like on a Friday night, like how cool is it to go to your high school and support your other team? Your teammates, or you're not your teammates, but your classmates. I just, I don't get why we're so afraid of Friday night stuff.
I'm not afraid of Friday night, and I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we don't need the lights on till ten o'clock. We can have Friday, a Friday game. It'll be open by nine.
Yeah, but you're only now gonna have audio until eight, right? If, I think if I'm reading, maybe I'm not reading it right. I get you what you're saying. You're saying Monday through Friday, you'll have lights till nine, and three Friday nights, you'll get them till ten. But I think on the audio, we're now saying typically, audio would be cut off at, cut off at eight P M. And I'm, I'm just saying, I feel like we've built this policy, and I know, and I know the school department and the school committee are trying to be good neighbors. And honestly, I'm so glad you said that, Margaret, about you guys being good neighbors. You have been incredible neighbors. Think about what you did. A parking problem for years that haunted that neighborhood, in, in an athletic complex, you fixed the parking problem. It wasn't the athletic complex's problem, but you fixed the parking problem for that entire neighborhood. I mean, we, people wanted, you know, the original plan had two turf fields. We took off a turf field because the neighbors were concerned that two turf fields was too much change. You, you did all the plantings, you did a whole new fence, you moved the field away from the neighbors. I mean, you guys have been awesome neighbors. Take credit for it, honestly. I, I just don't understand why our policy has to be so restrictive.
I can answer your question. Our league plays all games but football at six o'clock, not seven. And so you play a game at six, you will be done by eight o'clock. And, you know, most schools on Friday nights, whether your football team is home, they'd like your student body to be with, with, with your football team. And, or vice versa, you know, they try not to split their, their fan base. And so, yeah, can we play a game, a Friday night game? Feel like the game's six o'clock? Absolutely. Soccer, yes, we have. But we don't need to keep those lights on till ten o'clock. It's, it's when you play a seven o'clock football game, they have to be on till ten.
And so you'd have a what, a lacrosse game in the spring on a Friday night, and then just have it over at nine?
It would be.
Or no, I guess you'd have to have it over by eight if you want audio.
It would definitely be over by eight.
I know, it's, it's just so early.
It reads until the game, end of the game.
Yeah, typically, yeah. So if it was like eight fifteen or whatever, it should be.
Had overtime at one fifteen minutes.
Six o'clock is our league policy.
I don't know.
I mean, we're playing Coacid and Boys Lacrosse coming up this week, I think it might be tomorrow. And they have asked, can we move from six to maybe six fifteen, because they want to do a presentation before the game? But that's, that's what high schools do. Six o'clock is about the time we start.
Except for football.
Right, football's seven.
And it's a longer game.
Right.
So assuming then you get the changes you want of audio, not just the limited to the audio, to the two nights a week, and the Friday nights. So your, your change, you're asking for audio to be any night till eight o'clock?
It would be to, to finish the game.
Right, but right now, doesn't the policy say you can only have audio two nights a week?
Yes.
Yes. And we typically will have, that will, you know, on, we might have a game on a Tuesday and a Thursday. Audio never included Friday.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, and just, you know, just a point on the policy, so, you know, again, this isn't our policy. These are the conditions that were adopted by the planning board, and, you know, we go before the planning board and they decide what they decide. And even if, you know, if they see fit to grant some or all of these requests and alter the conditions, the school committee could still adopt its own policy, Liza, that would be more restrictive if it chose to. The school committee could recommend to the next chair that it look at and ask the policy subcommittee to suggest a more restrictive policy for the use of its fields, notwithstanding the conditions, so.
Ray, from what I understand, we already allow, in our policy, we allow play-by-play on the youth sports.
We don't. There's no youth football play-by-play. It hasn't been since it was played on the old field in 2012. So what do you understand that from?
Well, the planning board's was more restrictive than ours.
That's our policy.
That's here under, and maybe I printed it, I don't know, I printed out off of the website that additional notes, use of P A. will be allowed for H P S and Hingham Youth Sports Organizations. Typical use includes playing in the National Anthem, player introduction, halftime show, play-by-play for football games, public service.
That was our policy, but the planning board did not endorse that.
Okay, so Carol has, this Carol has told me, maybe I have the wrong thing. I, I wasn't here when this was decided.
Right.
However, what we're dealing with here, my concern of if the application, and Andy had stated this before, that it's saying here that Hingham School Committee respectfully submits these requests. And so that's saying all of us or some vote of, of majority had made these requests. And I was simply speaking as an individual on the school committee that that particular issue with the play-by-play for the Hingham Youth Football was a concern of mine. And in response to that, as a committee, we were submitting a joint statement to the planning board. So I have that right as an individual to speak to this in response to what is being submitted to the planning board on behalf of the entire committee. I, I've heard what everyone has said. I, I appreciate the, the information that there was play-by-play when there was on the old field. But I guess I, I still, we don't have anybody from the neighbors here tonight to speak, but I, I still have the feeling that there's cumulative additional usage of the whole property of lights and sound and much more activity than had been done over past multiple years. And I'd like to see some kind of slow, slow introduction of all of this additional activity.
So, so, so two, two comments. One is, I think, I think Carol got it exactly right, that since the school department is in control of these fields, we've had a request that we're passing on to the planning board, not advocating for it, but just saying, of the people that use these fields, this is something that's been requested, to a, you know, a change that there, that has been requested. We are asking you to consider that request. We're not saying we voted to approve it or anything, so. to consider that request, we're not saying we voted to approve it or anything, so I think that, I didn't understand it that way initially, and I think that makes sense to me. The other thing you mentioned, which I, it occurred to me as well, that last week we did have neighbors here, they all knew that we were going to be talking about this again tonight.
And that Margaret would be here.
And that Margaret would be here, and I'm actually encouraged, maybe wrongly, but encouraged by the fact that there are, because I'm sure that they put the word out, you know, what happened and, you know, what was discussed, people could watch if they wanted to. So I'm encouraged that the neighbors, now we're talking about something that's actually less expansive than what we discussed last week, even at that point, there isn't an outsouring of neighborhood concern. Now, again, they may just figure they'll express their concerns at the planning board meeting, but, you know, I actually find that encouraging, that we didn't, that the word got out and people weren't so worked up about it that they said, oh my God, we better get back there before they do something rash.
No, Dennis, I think that's exactly right, and I think, you know, as a school committee, whether or not we support 100% all of these requests at this point, I think we have an obligation to present it to the planning board. Hingham Youth Football and other youth sports pay thousands of dollars to use our facilities, and the law requires that we make our facilities available to the public. Okay? You know, we present it to the planning board, if they see fit to grant it, and the school committee later on decides that, you know what, maybe not such a good idea, or let's ease into it, or maybe the planning board phases it in, or however it gets decided, you know, great, but again, we can always set a policy that's more restrictive. We just, we set a policy before and it was, you know, essentially ignored by the planning board. So, you know, if we wanted to take a different approach this time, we could.
That, did you want to...
Yeah, just to clarify that procedural piece, there have been two times that I can remember in the fairly recent past when we were asked to go to the zoning board of appeals in behalf of the, of Hingham Youth Football, it was in both cases, and I think one was a time difference, I can't remember what the other one was, on the old field, because they don't have any access themselves, because we're the owners, is the term, of the property. So, so, and we've done that as a courtesy, and I can say for myself, I didn't agree with either of the things they wanted to do, but I felt it was our responsibility to give them an avenue to make the request, so it kind of supports what Dennis had said.
It's a good point about the application, that, now, I'll correct that when we get in there, you know, I'll make it clear that that should read an eight instead of a nine in terms of the time, because that was revised from the original request.
I, so I'm hoping that Hingham Youth Football will be at the meeting, because I think it's truly important, I think we, they had taken away from them the right to have their play-by-play, and that was a big concession, I think, for them, and I think they have the right to ask for that, and I hope they'll be there and that you guys will clearly state that you had that, you did have that for years. The sound system is so much better now, so much more controlled, that it's, it's really...
And that was when the press box was right up against...
Right.
Downing Street.
I know.
And the sound was horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I could hear it up on Jones Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments about this? Thank you, thanks everybody for coming tonight.
Could we move to the 48-hour, why Margaret is still here?
Yes, 48-hour items.
48-hour items, there are two. One is you got Margaret's coaching update, the other is a new piece of information that has just really been finalized today, and it's about softball. And a couple of weeks ago now, Margaret came to me and said that because of the enrollment in softball, you know, we really couldn't field two teams, a varsity and a JV team, and that's kind of a sad thing. Football has, excuse me, softball has been around a long, long time in this town, this very active youth program in softball. As well, we're always cognizant of Title IX and wanting to keep particularly girls' sports at the level, and we ought to make every effort that we could make to be sure that we have the two teams. And so Margaret had explored the options that she had in front of her, and one of the options was to make a request of the league and to make a request of MIAA that they allow, in order to keep the sport a viable one for us, that they allow eighth graders to be part of a team, which would be a JV team for us, because we were short on the numbers. And so I told her that I thought she should go about trying to make that difference so that we keep that sport a viable one. Over the long term, perhaps that isn't a sport we're going to be able to keep, but certainly we should make every effort in the short term. So in fact, there were some logistical issues, like how do we get girls from Hingham Middle School to the high school in time for the practices and that kind of thing, but Margaret is very resourceful, and in fact, she got the permission of the league, and she got permission from MIAA and found a bus that is coming in the direction of the middle school to the high school anyway, to get the kids there, and so today we had five eighth graders arrive for softball at the high school.
So, you know, it brought our enrollment up to 24, which...
Margaret.
It brought our enrollment up to 24, which is great for a varsity and JV team, it allows us to complete our schedule, our JV schedule, and, you know, just so you think it, it's not crazy, but, you know, that our numbers would be low in softball at Hingham, they're low in quite a few schools. Right up the street, they have 22, and another league member couldn't field a JV team, and so, you know, with the two JV, you know, it has the kids playing at their appropriate levels, and today, it was the first day, they were actually out on the fields, and it was lovely to see our new baseball field and our new softball field have drained beautifully, so...
Yeah, they looked good today, drove by.
So, so we will have...
Margaret, how did you get the five, or is it some sort of tryout or just...
Oh, no, what we did was, you know, put out, put out a, an announcement at the middle school out to all the parents, and we arranged a meeting, for anyone interested, and I had no idea, I thought, you know, will 50 people show up, will anyone show up? And so we did, we had five girls and their moms show up, and we talked a little bit about it, and, you know, they will play strictly at the junior varsity level, they, you know, they will absolutely play, they'll be, they were concerned about, you know, will we be displacing, you know, a high school student, and we had, we had the captains there, they spoke to the, you know, to the kids about, you know, we're a fun team to be a part of, we're like a family, and we would love to have you be a part of it, and...
Wonderful.
So I think it'll be good.
Very creative.
So it was good, yep.
Good result.
So I understand the signing bonuses helped a lot?
That's right, that's right, no move up, okay?
That's great, thank you, Margaret. Okay, so a couple of announcements, we have an appointment, new power educator, resignation, unfortunate to see Dana go.
The resignation, by the way, has been taken into account in terms of the budget.
And an alternate leave of absence.
The same thing, yeah, they were on that list, prior list.
Great, I don't think we have any other reports, so unless there's anything else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye.
See you at town meeting.